Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah. All the meeting till order at seven o'clock. Oh.
Tucker.
Present.
Valerie Hill, here. Here, Joe Schaller is not here, Rachel, oh, he's not here, Marty Cox.
Here.
Alright, we need to start with old business. Um, I hope you guys have two to look over the meeting minutes from twenty four oh two CU and twenty four oh three CU. We were attempting to approve oh two CU last time, but William wasn't at that meeting, so he was not comfortable approving those minutes. You know if anybody had any corrections that need to be made in either one?
No, that was for the starter ready mix?
No, uh, no, we already did that one. This one was the EB case on Jamaica Road.
I'm gonna have to stand.
So we cannot do those again.
Wait a minute, no, I was here. I was here on EB Road.
Yeah, you ran that one.
I was, I did, didn't I?
Not EB Road.
The EB, Tommy, yeah.
That's what got me confused.
This one is road.
Um, that was genitis, that was, uh, Preble County line.
That one I was gonna, I have to stand.
So we have to make a motion on each or can we do them together?
Well, you tell me what you want to do.
We're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to do them separately because I have to accuse myself from the Preble County line road.
You're going to have to do them separately.
Alright, uh, so twenty twenty four dash oh two CU, do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I make a motion.
Second.
I want favor?
Alright.
Aye. Alright, and twenty twenty four oh three CU, do I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second.
Second.
I want a favor?
Alright.
One upstitching.
Okay, please tell you.
I'm on air, alright. I'm going to announce the purpose of this meeting. It's to review case one point four oh four CU filed by Eli.
That line.
That line.
Uh, agents for Robyn and April Collins, properly located seventy nine sixty six Boomerstein Road in Germantown, Germantown Township, Montgomery County, Ohio. The applicant is requesting conditional use according to Article four, section four oh three C of the Germantown Township zoning resolution. The applicant rents the property from the homeowners Robbie and April Collins, wishes to continue running an on-field repair business, which includes farming equipment and farm trucks out of the home garage. As members of the board of zoning appeal, it is our duty to review this case at public hearing, then render a decision for or against the request based on the application, staff report, testimony that you folks about give, evidence presented and heard at this public hearing. But now all testimony during this hearing is required to be under oath. I would ask at this time that anyone wishing to provide or present testimony, please raise your right hand. Uh, swearing in, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help God, say I do.
I do.
Okay, thank you. You'll be asked to state your name and current address at the time you address the board. Please wait to be recognized by the chair, me, before speaking. Hope to get an opportunity to speak your voice, his or her comments, and then all the way back. You know, the case, uh, twenty twenty four oh four CU, we have a review of the staff report.
The applicant is Eli Shatfield, is that right? Okay, uh, seventy nine sixty six Boomerstein Road in Germantown, Ohio. The subject property is parcel ID D fourteen zero zero seven one three zero zero two one, approximately one point one seven acres located in section nine, town three, range four east, zone agricultural. Germantown Township, Montgomery County, Ohio. Property is located at ninety seven sixty six Boomerstein Road and is owned by Robbie and April Collins. The applicant is requesting a conditional use according to Article eight, section eight oh three L, which allows agricultural services as a conditional use in agricultural zone. Mr. Shatfield was previously running an automobile repair business out of the home that he rents from Collins. He was informed by the Germantown Township zoning department that an automobile repair business was not a permitted or conditional use in the agricultural district and immediately shut down his business and came to consulting. Mr. Shatfield stated that a majority of his business is for local farmers working on farm equipment and farm trucks, which led to this application for the conditional use in order to reopen the business. In accordance with Article four, section four oh four dot oh three, the public notice was published in Germantown Press and sent to local residents within three hundred feet on June twentieth, twenty twenty four. Application survey, legal descriptions, plot plan, copy of deed list, something within three hundred feet, and other pertinent information has all been submitted.
At this time, we'd like to have testimony by the applicant or their agent. Please, uh, state your name and address.
Uh, Eli Shatfield, seventy nine sixty six Boomerstein. Uh, so I rented the property from Robbie and April, October first of last year. Robbie kinda had stated that he ran his excavating company out of there and that it was a township and it shouldn't be a problem. I really didn't look any further into it because I looked around and seen that there was other small businesses like dog boarding and blah, blah, blah. But that time, just kinda moved forward with not knowing, so my ignorance is not an excuse, but I was ignorant to the situation. Uh, then we got the letter, so at that time, and my sign down, and that's where it brought us here today. I do quite a bit of just about anything, whether it be diesel trucks, cars, tractors, uh, bobcats, equipment, I can pretty much fix anything that has an engine on it. Uh, didn't realize that Germantown Township had a need for what I did until I got here. And then it seemed like there was a ton of farmers and other people around town that were like, hey, we have equipment that nobody wants to work on. Take a look at it, and sooner or later, I was fixing quite a bit of equipment around town, including cars and farm trucks, hay wagons, quite a few tractors, so on and so forth. Um, I'm from Sharonville, Ohio. My family absolutely loves it here. You guys have been great. The whole town has been amazing. I, I love the fact that I actually moved here. It was, it was definitely, I shut down a big diesel repair shop that I owned for about fifteen years because my commercial landlord skyrocketed at rent right after COVID. We moved out here as a gamble, and it has probably been the best thing that has ever happened to my family, to be honest. So I definitely appreciate that. And then I have a few letters from some people that couldn't show up today. I don't know if you guys want to, want me to read them, or I let me go about doing that. I might, uh, so, um, this one is from a lady named Shelley Moody. She lives, right off of Manning, I believe. Um, says, "To make concern, in May of this year, Eli worked on my tractor nineteen sixty four Ford Jubilee. Could not get it to run. Within a day or so, he had it running and, and it was working just perfectly, and it's been running well ever since." Having Eli available to work on my tractor and any other farm equipment that I've had around my farm has been a true asset to this community because it is something that we have been lacking. Not to mention the fact that he is, his pricing is more than fair, and we hope that this issue can be resolved and settled, and we can continue to provide his services in this town. Sincerely, Shelley Moody. Um, this letter here is from a young man named Kevin. He actually owns a lawn and landscaping company. He lives on the Preble County side, uh, off of Pleasant Valley Road, but, uh, his grandfather actually used to live in the house that I live in now, and that's how he found me. Um, it says, "To, to make concern, I was asked to write this letter on behalf of Eli Shatfield at the repair shop at Boomerstein. Eli has been a great help for me as I own a lawn and landscaping business called KCC Outdoor Services, and I also have a mini farm. Uh, he has fixed my gators, tractors, and also my riding mowers, even trailers at times. Before Eli came to Germantown, I truly struggled to find somebody close to take care of this type of stuff. It's been a million times different since he has opened his shop there. When my nineteen sixty two Mancy Ferguson tractor started acting up, within twenty four hours, he had it fixed, and it's been running better than it ever was before he decided, before we had it fixed. His came out to diagnose many things, and his pricing has been absolutely amazing." Uh, and that pretty much sums that one up. This other letter here, uh, is quite long. Um, it is from Verna, actually, so I believe I'll just let her do her time instead of reading her two or three pages if that's okay with you guys. Uh, but that's pretty much all I got to say for the moment unless anybody has some questions for me.
What are your normal hours that you work in the?
Um, so it does kind of vary, uh, but I try to stay as readily available as I possibly can. There is also times like, uh, Ben is not here today. I don't know what he's doing, but middle of the night, they're hayin' or something, and they have a breakdown, and I, I will get up in the middle of the night, come help them. Uh, there's been a couple of times I had to do that for Ben and also Eric Latch. I don't know if you guys are familiar with him or not. Uh, but generally, I try to stay Monday through Friday, but I work by myself, so I don't have any employees or anything like that, so there's evenings that I can get away from my children and spend some time in the shop. I definitely try to take advantage of that, so.
This is the, your main?
Uh, yes, I have been primarily working on cars and mostly diesel trucks since I was fourteen years old.
It's full time.
I've been, and then, uh, so at fourteen, I started a little shop in Westchester called E-Steps Automotive. Painted the building, swept the floors, did a little changes, learned how to do tires. By the time I was twenty, I opened a shop with a good friend of mine in Westchester. Uh, that went for about two years, and then we kinda parted ways. It's hard to do business with friends. Um, and then that's when I opened my shop in Sharonville, where I'm from, uh, kind of building down there. And I was there for a little over thirteen and a half years, and I probably would still be there today if he didn't skyrocket my rent. The, the after COVID thing, all of a sudden, commercial property went through the roof, so I have one other thing, uh, that just crossed my mind that I did go do. So I looked through the P two, P three zoning ordinances, and I started going around town just to see. Is there something available? Is there a place that I could be? And there's not anywhere down there that it's available for me to even lease or rent or anything like that. And then it also brought something else across my mind was, we'll use Ben for an example again. Eric is, is another example, but, um, Ben always has like a thirty foot gooseneck on the back of his truck, and anytime he's coming in and out, uh, he needs a place to be able to come in and go out, and my driveway works really well for that. Or if I was down there and he was dropping some equipment off or something, I think it would just be a hassle for them guys to be able to get their equipment and trailer down in the city. Plus, Germantown's really nice, uh, and I don't want to be a burden in the city, so I was kinda like, well, why not just keep it up here, you know, away from everybody? What is it?
Growth.
Yeah, been to growth, yes, yes. Uh, that's really all I got unless you guys got questions for me.
How many vehicles do you typically have on your lot?
Uh, I try to keep it fairly reasonable. Um, the moment because fair, I have probably six or seven, but I try to keep it around five. I don't think it would ever exceed ten. There is three trucks that are in the very back of my property, behind a fence in gravel, but those are my personal trucks, and at some point, I think those were mentioned at one time. And, uh, sooner or later, they will leave, uh, but they have very expensive motors in them. They, they have Cummins and seven three power stroke motors in them, so I don't have the heart to scrap them, you know, until I can get them apart. Uh, but I, I try to keep it to a minimum. Um, try not to overbook myself, and I tell people quite a bit like, hey, you gotta give me a couple of days because I'm a one man show, so it's tough sometimes. I do believe that, uh, there was a picture taken at one point, had the sign, and there was a silver F one fifty sitting there. And the F one fifty just gave me a recall. There was quite a few cars there at the time. During that particular time, I had COVID and pneumonia for about fifteen days, so I was not able to work, so it probably during that time, it, there was maybe more cars than there ever should have been. Um, but they quickly, as soon as I got over it, they quickly dispersed themselves. I try to keep things moving very quickly. I definitely like my property, so I don't ever want it to be a junkyard. Don't, I don't want anybody to think that it would ever be a junkyard. If there's something that needs to go, it, it will be removed. I like my property. It's a nice property.
You had to estimate the percentage of your business that's agricultural related. What would you place that percentage at?
Um, I would say it's fifty fifty. Um, did I know that coming here? No, I didn't, but that is, has kind of been the result. Um, I, I feel as if a lot of the farmers are like, hey, we really need help with other things than just our vehicles, and I, they, those things have definitely fell into my lap. Uh, I did not, but like I said, I did not know that that was gonna happen, but that is how it kinda ended up. I believe it's about fifty fifty. And then, on the other hand of things, um, I still have customers that will bring their cars all the way from Sharonville to this day. Uh, my phone never stops ringing. It hasn't for years and years. Family, friends, stuff like that, so and no matter what, I almost have a hard time turning any of them down because a lot of them are family or friends that I've known since I was a little kid, you know? So some of, some of that business still trickles its way up here. Uh, the only thing that I have really lost from down there is the bad customers, which it's actually been a good thing for me, to be honest. I, I could have went without those customers anyway, so.
Um, I know it says you don't do oil, um, service, lube service, but you wanna have oil?
I, I will, I will have oil.
How do you collect and?
Um, so I try to stay very tidy because I work by myself, so I don't have to worry about anybody else. Um, but I do have a storage tank. Uh, it's one of the IVC totes. Um, and, uh, waste, city waste management will come out and pump it out, and then they'll get rid of it. Uh, there's no drains in the floors in the shops, so there's no need for like EPA inspections because they'll, they'll have to come out and check the actual drains and stuff to make sure that the storage tanks, but we don't, we don't have any of that, and I typically refrain from doing like oil changes. If I have, if the car is there and I have to remove an oil pan or something, obviously, I, I have to drain it, but I'm, I'm very good about keeping it, you know, content to maybe just the concrete and cleaned up immediately. Um, I, I looked over some Ohio ordinances just quickly, and, uh, as a mechanic, you don't need a license to operate. You do, if, if you're at a collision center, you do have to have a iCar license, which is a program that we run through. Uh, and you also, it, it says, as long as you don't have floor drains and there is no EPA regulations on it. Now, if I had drains in my floors, obviously, I, there's no way I could prevent oil from getting in there, so we'd have to have storage tanks. Other than that?
Right, yeah.
Another question.
Is most of your business call in and you arrange for customers to come, or do they just bring their stuff and say, hey?
Okay, so if it is, uh, Ben, he may just drop it off. I, I guess you guys know Ben pretty well, so you probably know how he is. But most everybody, yeah, I try to schedule it as best as I can. And, uh, actually, Mr. McGuire, sometimes I'll run to his house, and he's got a little shop, and, and sometimes I'll help him out over there, so on and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Have those letters?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, anybody in favor of the applicant? Put it like. But.
The one with the letter?
State your name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Brina Chandler. I'm at nine six nine zero Astoria Road here in the Germantown Township. And I won't read the whole thing because like you said, it's front and back. Um, but the one thing I did want to actually point out going off of his remarks is how hard it is for some of us to find both a good diesel mechanic and also a tractor mechanic. When I inherited my farm, um, I inherited, when I purchased my farm, I inherited a two thousand and five, one hundred and thousand mile Ford F two fifty diesel, supercharged R truck. Um, it hadn't had an oil change in over two years, and with over a hundred thousand miles on it, it was probably not in best condition. Um, there's a lot of stuff that we had to take care of on the farm, and we really needed that truck that went with it. Um, the first time the truck went down, I had to take it to a mechanic north of Dayton, and it took six weeks to get it back. The second time was on Christmas Eve when the gas line froze, and the entire gas system had to be replaced. It cost me an arm and a leg and another two weeks without my truck. Less than a year later, the new fuel pump needed replaced while I was stranded in the middle of nowhere in northern Ohio over the weekend. That was neither a fun nor inexpensive experience. So you can understand my dread earlier this year when my truck went down again, this time northwest of Columbus at a farm option. After getting it towed back, I was not excited about finding yet another diesel mechanic as all the previous ones who had done work, eventually, all the work needed to be eventually redone. Somehow, we lucked out and found Eli and his company. Not only was he able to get our truck in right away, but he was also local, almost close enough to walk to, actually. Eli was amazing at communicating what was wrong with the truck and how long it would take. The final bill came in lower than expected, and Eli informed us of future items that would eventually need fixing and maintenance on the farm truck as well as our other vehicles. Um, I'm gonna be honest, I am, turned out to be a fairly decent farmer since moving to the Germantown area, but I am not a car person. So having someone who can remind me to go ahead and take care of my farm vehicles is a godsend to both my mental well-being and to my farm. Um, and just to give you an idea how important it is to be able to have both our Ford farm truck working and our nineteen seventies power horse tractor, which though is a beast, it is a little hard to find people to work on. We go through over one thousand pounds of hay and over three thousand pounds of feed each month, meaning to do weekly runs. It's about, costs us about two thousand dollars, all of which goes back to the Valley View area as all of our hay and our feed is purchased locally. So everything we do, try to do is done locally. Um, one of the other things I kinda want to point out, since Eli also mentioned it, I am fairly new, um, to the Germantown, Germantown Township area. I moved here during COVID, uh, pre-COVID, and then I actually purchased the land I was renting on during COVID. And I'd like to say the one thing, um, I've come to love living in the Midwest, and it is due to Germantown and its township. I love the small town feeling with the friendly neighbors, the feed store that members, our names, our amazing police force who have helped me more than once put my Apacas away. So yes, I am the township person with the Apacas that occasionally get out. Um, and when my truck went down on Christmas Eve, my next door neighbor saw it and helped me pull it home on Christmas Eve from Miami'sburg, so I didn't have to spend Christmas Eve alone in my truck waiting for a tow truck. It's the small things like that that make me absolutely adore Germantown and its township. With my farm, we are a licensed farm, and I am happy to say that we actually are bringing in an income now. And along with that, we also have a registered farm sanctuary where we take in the animals, such as the sheep, the donkeys, and the Apacas that are on our property. Um, when I first moved here and I started working as a farm, everyone was incredibly welcoming. I remember my first pretzel fest, and every single person who stepped by introduced themselves, and they were kind, and they were awesome. And now that we are in a place that we're actually making a profit, we like to give back as we're sponsoring a lot of the activities and some of the four H and FFA in the area as well. I ask as a farm owner, as a farm sanctuary owner, to please also give Eli and his family that same welcome that I have received here in Germantown and Germantown Township, and I am thankful for every day. I will not read the rest of it because there's other people who want to talk, but I do have a copy of it, and it's also copies from volunteers from my farm sanctuary who has also dealt with Eli directly. Because quite honestly, the last time the truck went down, I threw up my hands and walked away, and I told someone else to deal with it, and they're the ones who found Eli for me, so. I'm gonna turn these in. Thank you guys very much.
You wanna testify?
Me.
Yeah. State your name and address, please.
My name's Kathy Stubbs. I live at eighty six twenty five Boomerstein Road, um, in Germantown, so we're just down the road from where Eli is. And just wanted to come and say that I feel like he has been nothing but an asset to our community. He's worked on our farm trucks numerous times. Um, you were asking him earlier if people call and make an appointment or just stop, stop by. John just stops by and makes an appointment, but
I love John.
But he's always willing to help. He's, uh, gotten us going when we needed to get going, and in farming, that's really important. Um, we haven't been able to get him to work on a truck or a tractor yet, but we're hoping to get that done in the near future. And we've got a couple of tractors that we have lined up. Um, drive by his property numerous times a day, being right down the road from him. Um, I've never seen a problem. Uh, you know, he doesn't, there's not a flow of traffic that's a problem, that he doesn't impede traffic, you know, pulling trucks in or out or anything like that. Um, like I said, it's just, I don't see anything but an asset in, in what he's doing and his family being in our community. Um, like they've said before, his prices are reasonable, he's honest, he's upfront, he's always willing to help. Um, my husband had back surgery, and he offered to come down and feed animals or whatever he could do to help us out. So that's the kind of neighbors we want, and we appreciate him, and we hope that you guys can work this out so he can stay in our community. Thank you.
Anybody else speaking in favor of the applicant?
Eric McRidgen Road.
Well, we love the city on that.
State your name and address, please.
Nick Brandt, one oh two three two Carlisle Pike. Uh, my wife and I operate KV Sport Horses. Uh, so it's an equestrian center that we've operated now for six years. Um, we have diesel trucks, tractors, uh, other farm equipment that we utilize, and it is tough to find people to work on it. And since, uh, Eli has moved into the area, it's made things a lot easier for us. Uh, he's helped out on, working on various, uh, pieces of equipment. Um, similar to them, I've got a tractor that when the season's over with bush hogging, I get that over to him. Uh, he's helped with a couple of my implements, uh, get those going, and, you know, traditional, you know, I go over to Phil's or whatever it is now in Carlisle, they're not gonna be able to work on a lot of the equipment I have, and there's not many places like that around. Um, and, and there's some agriculture specific places, but they're thirty, forty minutes away, where this is less than ten minutes for me. Um, he even picks up and drops off for me, so. Uh, similar to that lady, it's been very helpful. Um, it's time-saving, but also, you know, I know if I'm getting help like that, I think there's plenty of our agricultural type people that benefit as well. So I, I'd hate to see him not be able to, to practice his business. Well, that's all I had then.
Anyone else want to speak in favor of the applicant? The long mirror.
Uh, Doug Lakes, live at eighty five sixty six Boomerstein Road, also just down the road, and, uh, I don't really have any farm equipment or anything that, that Eli's worked on. I just more wanted to speak about his character. I mean, from the time he's moved, you know, but from the time they moved in, you know, we just, you know, started going down there. I take my, my boy down there and think he likes to be out there at our house more than, than mine and, uh, and helping around. So I just wanted to speak to, but he's just, the whole family is just great, so, you know, it'd be a shame not to see him be able to make his living. Um, you know, where is that? So that's really all I want to say.
Are you in favor of it?
Yes.
I think.
Brian McGuire, one three 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 four Friend Road. Forgive my appearance, it never did start raining, so I never did quit working. Uh, Eli has been an asset to this community. I've been in Germantown Township my entire life. I don't ever remember having a business that we could go to that provided the service that he's providing. Uh, he has come and, uh, actually, he's come and pulled me off the scales in Farmersville because my truck broke down. Uh, he's only worked on our farm trucks. He has loaned me tools that I did not own when I was working on something my, of my own, uh, doing the work myself. Uh, he has been to my farm and used, well, actually, he just, he didn't use my shop. He laid in the gravel and did it outside. Uh, he has also worked on our stuff there at his shop. Uh, prior to him, the last person that worked on my, our diesel engine truck was just north of Cincinnati. Uh, they charged us way too much. I'm kind of embarrassed to say I even paid that much money to get a truck fixed. But he ended up But he ended up fixing it finally. I'd used a shop over in Preble County prior to going to Cincinnati. Nobody could get it fixed. In the three times I had it worked on, I think I put fifteen hundred miles on it. And I've probably put five thousand on it since Eli worked on it. He's not just a good family man, he's not just a good man to have in our community. He's not just a stand-up guy, he's a, he's good at his craft. And he's honest. And to lose, to lose that. From this community, when this community has never had it before, seems. I don't know, I don't wanna say foolish, it just, it seems like we've got to be able to find a way to keep. Him in this community. And I hope that you as a board can find it advantageous to do so. Thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak in favor of the applicant? Anyone wanna speak in opposition to the applicant?
Very long, eight four two six Boomerstein Road. I don't have any problem with anybody making their own living and everything. We have seen as many as twenty vehicles parked around there. And we go by it every time we go in it, and I don't wanna begrudge him any money or any work. We have a barn full of equipment that we service ourself, but it's all kept inside. It's not just spread out all over.
And some of the vehicles. Okay, I'm sorry.
And I don't begrudge anybody making, but the appearance of it and the appearance of it as part of Germantownship doesn't. I don't know, when you look around, a lot of Germantownship, there's not that, and I have no ill feelings toward the man. But just twenty vehicles sitting around your place, it's not that. Just doesn't, I don't know. I mean, we have lots of farm equipment, but it, and when we work on it and it's, everything is tucked in a barn, there's nothing sitting out. You can drive by our place anytime, any day and stuff is put away. I realize you, that you, that you can't work on twenty vehicles at one given time. So I'm just concerned about the size of getting more and more and more. Vehicles there. And it, but I don't begrudge the man his business, it's just this. It just isn't pleasing to go by there all the time. And anybody's welcome to drive by our place and see the, all, everything that we have tucked away in the barn.
Yeah, the same thing. Pardon me?
Pardon in?
Yeah.
He stated his name.
It's the first time I've been here, I don't know. If you want me to speak, that's fine. Pardon me?
He just wanted to make sure you would take it.
Yeah. Yeah. Same thing, you know, I have nothing against his business. I don't know him, I've done any business with him. Might be a fine family, I'm okay with that. And we can need that in Germantownship, but as far as amount of items have been there, there's seventeen there right now. Some of them have been there. Since they hold them in, called them in or whatever. I mean, there's windshield smashed, you can't drive that. It's been there for a long time. And it's only appearance. I have no objection with him working on something inside the barn. But it just leads to more things. And my wife said, I don't think our township needs that. You know, nothing against him whatsoever. Understand? I mean, that, that's just our opinion. I thought there'd be more people here than that. Maybe you were wrong, I don't know. I'm not a public speaker.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Either of you can answer. Are you requesting with your opposition that you? Let me ask, let me ask my question, let me ask my question. Are you in opposition of him holding a business there? Or are you in opposition of him having things outside the barn as a business there? I'm trying to get specifically what you're in opposition of.
The vehicles that are sitting there.
In the lot, about the lot?
Yes, I mean, they're, like I say, I count, we go by it several times a day. And I know the previous owners. He had a little business there. He had a small business there, I mean.
He still owns it, Mr. Collins.
Mr. Collins, he still owns it. What the business was exactly, I don't know, but you know, I know, I knew they're, they're good people too, but. Yeah, I would say that's our main concern. You know, if you wanna put a vehicle in a barn and work on it. I mean, there's no noise, he's not loud or anything, that's no problem. Guess it's the appearance. Thank you.
All right, next, I think there's anybody else wanting to testify? So review of Article Four, Section four oh six oh five. The BDA shall not grant a conditional use unless it shall, in each specific case, make specific. Findings of fact directly upon the particular evidence presented to it. Support conclusions that were made supporting the standard established in Article Four. Section four oh six oh five of the Germantownship zoning resolution. The staff report had addressed each of those standards. Okay.
Do you guys, do the board members or audience have any additional questions?
Yeah, I, I do, and it's more procedural, Shauna. I looked at the neighbors within three hundred feet and I just wanted to confirm a few folks. Received their notification of this. William Hanahan.
Is that on the list that's on the application?
No, that's why I wanted to make sure they were notified.
I got Douglas and Lisa Hanahan.
Right. When I did a search of buffered parcels within three hundred feet, a William Hanahan showed up. I've got the parcel number that he's owner of. As well as Mary Day, Michael and Kelly Lael.
I sent to the ones that were given.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can we not close the public hearing? At seven thirty-eight PM? Is there any further discussion or comments with the board? Do we need to go into?
I'd like to go, I'd like to deliberate.
We're gonna go in executive session and we'll be back.
Motion for executive session.
Deliberation.
Deliberation, all right.
And a second?
Second.
At seven thirty-eight PM?
Thank you.
You're returning me from deliberation at 8:04 PM. Are you guys ready to vote?
No, we're gonna have to continue this case to notify those people that weren't notified. And then you folks don't have to come back to retestify. If you want to attend the meeting, you're welcome.
Gotcha.
But these people that weren't notified, they could easily overrule this. They were, without an objection, administrative.
Three was it? About that step?
Three.
Who, three?
Three families, or three owners, three property owners.
Maury, I couldn't hear what you said, I'm sorry. I thought there was only...
We're gonna enable it until the other, there's other property owners within 300 feet that didn't get notified to come here tonight.
The other way we see it was in the press.
In the press, that's how we...
I don't know how things work, you know?
Yeah, they notified people 300 feet from the property. And there were people that were not notified that are 300 feet. So we're gonna open it up next month and give those people an opportunity to be here.
Okay.
You guys don't have to come back, or you can if you want. It's up to you guys.
Can I ask any question? Because I'm kind of like all new to me. How did it all get started? I mean, why was this meeting, or why was this started? We just read it in the press.
There was one complaint about business being run.
Okay, so something came up, officially, or they came to you?
It just came to the zoning department.
In our zoning resolution, there are permitted uses on different zoned properties. This is an agricultural property, agriculturally zoned property. So there are certain permitted uses. There are also conditional uses. An application, conditional use application must be submitted for those uses. And those cases, and also there are variances to those as well. Conditional uses and variances come before the Board of Zoning Appeals to be heard. It's a quasi-judicial board. And those are either granted or not granted, or granted with conditions. Those are, can be challenged in Miami's Berg municipal court. After it goes through an administrative appeal. It's a, you know, it's a procedure, it's a process. So that's what our, that's what this board does, is here's conditional uses as well as variances.
That's why we want to wait and get those other people the opportunity to come. Because if they don't get the opportunity and we rule on something, then they could come back and say, hey, we wanted to speak there. Then what we had done would be...
Yeah, I mean...
So we're more than 300 feet, that's why we didn't...
I don't want to feel that I'm the only, we're the only ones.
It's a procedural. Our zoning resolution requires us to notify all property owners within 300 feet. And it does, from what I'm looking at, it does not appear that every property owner within 300 feet has received proper notification. So...
These are we missing because I measured and there's only four.
And this is according to the Montgomery County Auditor's site. It gives a buffer of 300 parcels. And it was that William Hannahhan, Mary Day, Mary Charles, but Mary Day, and Michael and Kelly Lael.
Very likely. William is Doug's dad.
Might not be, but we have to follow. So, we appreciate everybody coming, we really do.
So, can I ask though? If he was 100% agricultural, it's all farm trucks, all tractors, would...
We'd still be here. And we still, we still...
It's considered a conditional use and not a permitted use, you still basically have to get permission.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the question.
Because when you, we are just agriculture, we farm it, so that's...
But you're not running, you're not running a business.
Right.
We're saying that... Wow.
No, that's the fine line, because technically a farm is a business.
Yeah.
And that's where the fine line comes through.
But as far as other businesses, there are certain ones that are just permitted, and then there are ones that are conditional. But as far as other businesses, there are certain ones that are just permitted, and then there are ones that are conditional.
They are, apparently. But that makes them a business and they do sell grain.
Whatever storage.
That's, yeah, pretty much.
Salt shops.
That's, yeah. You can look in our resolution.
Yeah.
We did, we read it.
And I, I cracked up when I saw salt shops or salt sharpening because that was probably in there since my dad. He had a salt shop there.
Okay, so that's it?
I was just curious. Thank you.
All right.
Do you have any other business we need to discuss? All right, somebody wanna make a motion if you're.
Make a motion, Hidger.
Okay. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. So basically.
They asked how they'll know.